Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the September 10th Board of Education meeting. If you could all join me for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we will begin this evening with our report of the superintendent. Dr. Byrne.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for joining us for our first Board of Education meeting of the 2024-2025 school year. Tonight is our summer recap, and as you might imagine, many of us in the room have been very busy since our last meeting of the 23-24 school year on June 21st, including the board itself. And immediately after the close of the school year, the board held its annual reorganization meeting and planning retreat on July 11th and 12th. And there were also meetings of the board on August 12th and 23rd. The work of the Board of Education is never done. Lots of good learning went on in the district while students were away. Over 130 teachers participated in professional development, and this equates to about 40% of our teaching staff. Lots of good facilities work also went on over the summer. We did tour two of the buildings, visited two of the buildings this evening, but you'll hear a lot more about the facilities projects in tonight's presentation. A huge thank you to Gabby Peruccio and our facilities director, Rob Camigliano, and the entire facilities team for a truly monumental effort. Photos of all the upgrades can be found in a slideshow on the facilities department page of the district website. And the work continues. Just last week, the new scoreboard at Nugent Stadium was installed. It's a big upgrade, as it actually functions completely unlike the other one that we could not repair. It allows for scoring in all sports and has the timing now required by New York State for lacrosse. It's also LED, so the bulbs don't need to be replaced very often, if at all. A huge thank you to the Rye Fund for Education for funding the new scoreboard. And we are now at work planning, in the final planning stages, for the renovations of the softball field due to be completed by the start of the spring softball season. The first day of school, Tuesday, September 3rd, was a beautiful day, allowing students and parents to walk or bike to school and enabling those crucial first-day photos to be taken outdoors. State Senator Shelley Mayer came out to meet parents and students and Board of Education trustees at Midland School. Senator Mayer is the chair of the state's Committee on Education, and we appreciate that she comes to visit and spend time with us and our families. By the time we meet on September 24th for our next meeting, four of the five back-to-school nights will be in the books. Midland, Milton, Osborne schools are all taking place on September 18th. Rye Middle School is September 19th. Rye High School is a little bit later on September 26th. Please note that all schools have a one-hour delayed start after the back-to-school night. I can't believe I'm saying this, and I might get whacked with the gavel, but we are once again buried under a mountain of COVID test kits provided by New York State. Last Thursday, two giant pallets of COVID test kits arrived at the district office, so we have them again in the entryway of the district office and at all of the schools. Feel free to come on by and take a bunch, and don't be shy. That concludes my report for this evening.
The one thing that the state keeps on giving. Thank you, state of New York. Okay, so we will move on to presentation and discussion number one for the summer recap. Dr. Byrne.
Okay, so you're going to get a group effort here. We each have a piece of this pretty extensive presentation. And as we always do, we begin with a Rye commitment. So what we're going to hear about tonight is basically how we live the Rye commitment every day. So you're going to hear about instruction. You're going to hear about curriculum planning and how we're thinking about what we need to do to realize and help our kids become those critical thinkers and effective communicators. You'll hear about what we've been doing to the facilities to make things work. You'll be hearing about what we do for our students with special needs who require additional services over the summer. And you'll hear about how, in our thinking, planning, and execution in the HR department, we are building that generation of staff and improving our staff so that they can be those teachers that can deliver on the promise of the Rye commitment. But I'm just going to start with a very brief look at enrollment. I added this component this year because, while two years does not make a trend, I think it's important for us to be recognizing that what we're seeing the last two years is an increase above our projections. And we're soon will be getting our updated demographic report. Not sure what that will look like, but as you'll see on this first slide, we are 63 students above our projection for this school year. And in eight of the 13 grade levels, we're either above the projection or exactly at the projection. So I think it's an important piece for us to keep in mind, because last year, we were 91 students above our projection at this point in time. So, you know, when we look ahead, and I suspect that we're going to see, this is the chart we get from the demographer, I suspect we're going to see a little bit of a different chart here, but I think it's really important to know. We have a significant number of families who are new with their first children now in the schools, and a lot of smaller children behind them that will be coming. So I just thought it would be important for us, because we're always thinking for the future, we're always future-proofing with our systems and our work, but thinking about where we anticipate that enrollment might be coming. And we'll be getting the updated enrollment projections from our demographers fairly soon. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Murray.
Hello, good evening. So tonight I'll be giving you an overview of the curriculum instruction work that went on during the summer in terms of professional development and also some curriculum writing projects. I'll also talk about some retreats that we held, and our new teacher orientation, and give you some updates on new programs for the middle school and high school. So here are in-service courses and workshops that took place in the areas of literacy, math, technology, and social-emotional learning. We held a Shifting the Balance practicum. This is the second summer that we've done this. It's based on a text called Shifting the Balance. That's all about bringing science of reading research into the elementary classroom. It's very popular. Teachers really enjoy the text, and so we're running it again to study it further. We also held a session on reading notebooks, and not just for the elementary level. This one was K-12. Reading notebooks is something that you typically would see in an elementary classroom, but we're using it as a tool in middle school and high school classrooms to increase the level of critical thinking. We're asking students to do as they read. And you actually, I think, saw a presentation from Dr. Washington last spring on how she's using them in her classroom. So we wanted to hold a session on that. We also had a literacy institute right at the beginning of the summer. There are about 40 teachers, K-12, that came to that, and that was about reading across the content areas. And we had two speakers, Carl Anderson and Phil Seifried. Carl spoke about using mentor texts when conferring with kids, and Phil spoke about AI in literacy and how to use it for planning and also for student learning. And I also, I would like to thank the fund for that. They helped support those two days. So thank you to the Rye Fund. For math, we started a fellowship for building thinking classrooms. That's a text I've talked to you about before as well. That's from Peter Liljelal, and it's, the method is to offer students some critical thinking tasks that they can solve on vertical surfaces around the classroom, so they can see, present their work, look at their peers' work, and offer some feedback, and have really good discussions about the different strategies that are seen. This is his second text, actually, that we formed the fellowship on. And so the teachers that studied the first one are now enrolled in the second one. And that work is led by Carrie Wenderman, who's really doing an outstanding job. We call these, you know, a fellowship, and also the same with the practicum, because they start in the summer, they go on all year. And so the teachers form this little cohort, and they do intervisitations as part of their work, and they also, there are some built-in coaching sessions with the staff developers. We had, for technology, we held a session on digital portfolios. That group actually started in the summer and will continue throughout the year. So we're teaching teachers, K to 12, how to help students design their own digital portfolio, so they can reflect on their work, demonstrate growth, and really see their progress throughout the year. So that session went well. And we typically hold a Google Workspace session every summer so we can keep up to date on our Google apps. So we ran that. You had a chance this evening to see our Promethean boards in one of our classrooms at Milton. We do have, you know, several going up in the district, and so teachers need to learn and want to learn about how the best practices for those. And then we also held a book study on a text called AI for Educators from Matt Miller. And it's a really practical guide for how teachers can use AI to really streamline their process and to help them plan more effective instruction. For SEL, you know, the biggest sort of professional learning event we had was a responsive classroom training, and that came from the recommendation from the District-wide SEL Committee. That was across four days, also supported by the Rye Fund. We had about 20 teachers and five administrators that took part in that. And they learned about how to bring a morning meeting into the elementary classroom. And I was just talking to some teachers today who are doing it and loving it, and there's some really good positive energy around it. And so we're looking to how to expand that and bring that to every elementary classroom.
And one of the ways has been how the administrators have been using the techniques of the morning meeting with their faculty. And they all kicked off their initial faculty meetings using the responsive classroom. That way, it spreads beyond just the 20 teachers that were at the institute, but it's, they're able to apply it across the whole staff.
Yes. And we also held a book study on a book called Unselfie by Dr. Michelle Borba. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that text. It came out a few years ago. It's all about teaching kids about empathy and really, and really kind of stressing that there's an importance that we do this work and that kids, unless they can empathize, they cannot, they can't problem-solve, and that, you know, they can't collaborate unless they have that skill. And so we, you know, the teachers enjoyed that text as well. So we held our administrative retreat this summer, which we do every year, and had a couple of different goals. The first one is that we, the instructional team of the admin team worked to design a process to work with teachers to, so they could design an authentic project that they could do in the classroom with students. So we're asking all teachers to either design or redesign an authentic project and implement at some point this school year. And so the administrators will be leading them through that work. And so we came together. We were led by Diane Cunningham, who's a consultant we work with. She's been working with us on our critical thinking work for a couple of years now. So this is really the extension of that. It's how, we can't ask kids to think critically without putting the appropriate amount of, the appropriate tasks in front of them. And the administrators will be guiding the teachers in designing their project. And that work will be done by November, so they can implement it by April. So we spent some time doing that. We also began individual action research projects, and this was new for our admin team. The action research that they decided to take on, it was either, it was either connected to a district goal, the Rye commitment, or just a specific challenge that they've had in their building that they really want to tackle. And that was a really great process, because it allowed them to really pinpoint what they wanted to take on, decide what action they wanted to do, think about how they're going to collect the data, think about how they're going to interpret the data. And we're going to be coming back to this every month this year. And I think that they're excited about it, because I think it will make some pretty good change in their buildings. We also spent half of a day working with a consultant from Cambridge Leadership Associates. She came to talk to us about the unique challenges that we face as school leaders and talked to us about the difference between technical challenges and adaptive challenges, and how to navigate adaptive challenges, which can be, which can be tricky. And so that session went well. We kind of were in little peer groups, kind of consulting with each other on the different challenges that we're facing. And again, very, very positive outcome. And we always like to finish our admin retreat with a team-building activity, and we always like to choose something pretty fun. So this year, we chose to go to Hudson Table in Stamford, and we broke into teams, and we had kind of a cooking competition. And you see there, you've got Bianca and Angela and Linda there making some homemade pasta, which is part of the recipe we were given. And you've got one of the teams there with their completed meal, looking very proud. So it was a good time.
We also, from the operations team, part of their planning during the retreat, when we were, the instructional team was focused on the authentic projects, was designing, beginning the design process for a reunification drill that we will be conducting this year. I don't think we have the date set yet, but we will run a full reunification drill later on in the school year for all of us to learn from. And they did some really good work on that, in that, over that time period in the retreat.
And then later in the summer, we held our department coordinator retreat. This has now become an annual event as well. So we brought in our K-12 department coordinators, and they designed learning sessions for their departments, for their department meetings. In the past, you know, their department meetings have been very logistical in nature. And so we're shifting that to making them learning opportunities for teachers and increase the amount of learning that they're doing. And last year, the department coordinators did really a fantastic job designing their goals, designing what those learning sessions would be. And so this year, we returned to that planning, and they built upon their work from last year and created new goals. And so what you're looking up here, these are the charts that our social studies department coordinators, we've got two, one for middle school, one for high school, and so they collaborate if it's the same content area, so we can have that alignment across the department. And you're seeing that their goal that they have is for teachers to create an environment that encourages student-directed civil discourse using authentic research skills and strategies. So last year, they worked on the research skills portion, and so now they really want to get more into the civil discourse and think about how do you foster that within the classroom. They selected their learning outcomes. They have a model, which also, which includes some intervisitations for teachers to go into each other's classrooms, and then they have a timeline there. So it's a very, it's a good day, it's well-spent time. And we also, we always, always do a feedback protocol, too, so that we put the coordinators in groups, and they present their plan, and they get feedback from their colleagues. So all of that went very well. We held an academy retreat where we welcomed our new academy students, our new 11th graders to the program, and our 12th graders were there as well. This day was split into two different parts. We had our AM part, which was for teachers and their planning, and then we had our, the afternoon, when the students came in, we had lunch, and then the students, students came for lunch, and then they met in small groups to start to get to know each other a little bit. The morning focused on redesigning our advisory program. The academy always had an advisory program, and it sort of looked different every year. And so we really wanted to bring it to a point where it was supporting the larger goals around community building. And so essentially, they have an advisory that is a lesson that looks a little bit like a morning meeting at an elementary school, but longer. And it includes social-emotional learning skills. It includes community, community service and service learning. And it really is a time for them to share and kind of get to know each other. And we think, we always talk about ways to get kids to feel as though they belong, and I think that's that time for that group of students, so that really understand that they belong in that community and what their role is within it. And when we designed the program, the teachers wanted to do it kind of thematically by month, and so we designed what those themes were going to be, and teachers spent the time putting those lessons together. We welcomed 22 new faculty members in our new teacher orientation, and Brian and I led this together. We, as we do every year, we designed some sessions for them around the Rye commitment, technology, special education. But we added a few new things this year. So the picture on the left is the, this critical thinking challenge we wanted to give them. They're trying to build a tower with 18 pieces of spaghetti and a, and put a marshmallow on top, so they had to see who could build the tallest tower. So that was, that was a fun way for them to also kind of get to know each other, too. And then we, and the picture on the bottom there, that's a new session we put in place. We hosted a panel of teachers, administrators, and parents, really to give the new faculties like an insight, some insight into the community, the school and the, and the community of Rye in general. And so the teachers got to ask a lot of different types of questions to them, and they're all very candid responses. And it was, it was, it was a nice addition, I think, and it went very well. The teachers, the new teachers felt like they were happy to have that opportunity to talk with different groups of people.
And as we do every year, we also had our extended school year program for special education. So this is provided to our special education students to prevent substantial regression, and it was a very successful year. I have to give a shout out to Sam Gleason, who was the ESY coordinator, who I was not there every day this year, which felt a little strange, but she did a wonderful job. And then we continued our partnership with Rye Rec for the afternoon for our students in the special class, and Megan Barnett helps to oversee that program. And so that is, has grown and been very successful. The pictures that you see here, you know, thanks to Gabby, because she always finds the money that we need so that we can have our end-of-year fun day. This year, we decided to go with the blow-up slide, so that is what you see. That's the whole group of everyone that was there. And the police department, the fire department are always wonderful partners, and they bring the trucks. And then we had the Blue Path dogs as well. But overall, very successful summer for the, for all of the students that participated.
So in terms of curriculum projects at the middle school and high school, we, we wrote a course called Skills for Success. This is a new sixth-grade elective. We kind of redesigned what a sixth-grade elective would look like. And so this course includes SEL skills, includes digital citizenship skills, and also executive functioning. And we put that course together this summer. We also finished up writing Earth Science. This is the, aligned to the NGSS, the new science standards, for both the middle school and the high school. And so this course is different because of that, from, different from the prior Earth Science course. I would say the amount of rigor is, would be the difference between those two courses. We also do the same for biology, so that we have a fully-aligned NGSS biology course in the high school this year. Again, more rigorous than the prior living environment course. We also switched the math sequence. So in previous years, in this district, we've run a two-year algebra course, Algebra I followed by Algebra II, and then students would take the Regents. So we've changed that to follow a typical New York State sequence, where you give Algebra I and you give the Regents after Algebra I. And so that meant that we had to enhance and readjust our Algebra I units for middle school and our high school Algebra I course, so that you're now, the eighth graders who are in Algebra I will be taking, it's actually Algebra I-R, we call it, because they'll be taking the Regents at the end. So we finished writing those courses. We also wrote the AP Seminar course. This is the first course in the AP Capstone Program, and that launched this year. So that is up and running, and I'll talk more about that in the next slide. Oh, sorry, I didn't mention modeling and robotics. We also wrote two, two engineering courses. We switched from one course that we felt that our students were coming into high school, and that one course, they, their skills were at a level that were past it. And so Caitlin worked with her team to redesign that course into two semester courses that are at a higher level.
Tricia, can I ask you one question about the Algebra I-R? When you redesigned that, and then children will now take the Regents exam, does that affect Algebra II at all? Are they, kids getting more than in this class, is it covering more topics?
Yeah, so we polled topics from Algebra II and Algebra I. And so then the next course in the sequence would be geometry, and not, it's not GeoTrig anymore. And then Algebra II becomes Algebra II Trig.
Okay.
So that's, so the room that was, is now in the Algebra II course is now taken by the Trig, if that makes sense.
Okay, so it's Algebra I.
Geometry.
Geometry.
Algebra II Trig.
Like with the way I had it way back when. Okay.
Yeah, and it's going to help a lot, for a lot of things, but it will help, help with a lot of things, but it also will help with the transfer students that come in.
Yes.
Sometimes it's really tricky unplacing them because of the Trig piece that we do differently here.
And so for that ninth-grade class and 10th-grade class, that, those don't need to be redesigned? Are those being implemented this year in the high school, or will those need to be rewritten?
So this is rolling up with a cohort of kids.
I see. So next year, the eighth graders will be ninth graders, and then they'll have geometry.
Right, correct.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so just wanted to update you on some new programs. I believe you're all familiar with, but just so you know what work went on this summer with them. We have our IB diploma program. We're in our authorization process for that. And this summer, I worked with Cody Bloom, our IB coordinator, to come up with a communication plan, because we understand that the most important thing we could be doing right now is telling everyone about this program, so they have the information that they need to make some decisions for courses. And so we put together a plan that really starts with Cody meeting with counselors several times, going into 10th-grade English courses and talking to students so they're aware about it, going to the sophomore parent meeting that is coming up, also going to the junior parent meeting, because those students have an opportunity to take an IB course their senior year, not be in the program per se, but they can just take an IB course. And Cody also will be holding office hours for students who are interested. And so we're just coming up with a lot of different opportunities. We'll do a curriculum council meeting on it. He'll do a PO meeting on it. I believe we have a Board of Ed meeting on it coming up. So, so a lot, we're taking every, every opportunity we can to let people know that this is coming. And also, in addition to that, we, teachers were working over the summer to put their course outlines together. So we want all of those completed by January, so when we give those to IB, they can hopefully get us authorized by April, is our goal. So as I said, for the AP Capstone Program, we've launched the AP Seminar course. We have 37 students enrolled in it, and this is the first of, first of two. So after the AP Seminar, if these students wanted to continue on, they could enroll in AP Research, which will start the following year for them. And if they wanted to complete the Capstone Program, they would take any four additional AP courses across high school to do that. And then I went over this a little bit, but so the Grade 8 Regents course is also, just to give you some idea of what the enrollment is, for the Algebra I-R course that I just spoke about, there are 182 students enrolled there, and with Earth Science is 93 students enrolled in Earth Science. So again, higher-level courses than we've seen in the past in eighth grade.
Okay, here we go. This is our recruitment scorecard, right? So it was a very, very busy spring. Just keep in mind that we start this process as early as February, is when it's prime time to get into the market. And we did the majority of our hiring before that. But here's the summary: two admins, 21 teachers, six teacher lead replacements, seven aides and assistants, and one custodian that starts next on Monday. Yeah. Remaining vacancies: a speech and language pathologist, a special ed life skills lead replacement, an assistant principal that we posted for today that we expect to be a hotly contested opening, especially with the draw of our new principal here. So teaching assistant and two custodians. Tricia, could you?
Thank you.
So in addition to the hiring, it was a very busy summer, and I had mentioned over our retreat that we are slated for our internal audit. HR will be the topic of our internal audit, excuse me, beginning this fall. We had recently settled on our TA, teacher aide and assistant, contract. teacher aide and assistant contract in, in late May-June, and so that we were working to publish those edits. It's going to the printers later this week, and we'll be able to put it in physical copies into the hands of those unit members within a week's time. We've also been working on new staff handbook that we're branding as Employee Information Launchpad, because who wants another handbook, right? Each school has a comprehensive teacher handbook, right, in each of our schools, and we provide pretty extensive and regular training for our aides and assistants. But we thought there was a need for a more generic, all-encompassing, for all of our employees, one-stop-shop for information. So it really is a launchpad. It's just one single page with a bunch of very important linked information that folks can have at their fingertips. I don't know if you know, if you're on the policy committee, you're aware of this, but we're constantly being bombarded with compliance rules and regulations, where our employees are required to have very specific training in bloodborne pathogens or specific trading, and yeah. And so over the years, these, this list of videos and video training sessions has grown to a place where it's just not realistic or feasible. So what we've been doing is we're, we've very, rather than making everybody do every single one, we found out what the, the very clear legal liabilities are for each group, and we've now segmented them by role in the district to make it more manageable. And then we've also found a way to rotate in and rotate out certain ones, because we have two brand-new ones that are very big, which is workplace, workplace violence prevention. And then there's also a mandated reporter recertification. So all of our forward-facing employees are required mandated reporters, but the New York State had decided that they needed to update that training. So everyone who's considered a mandated reporter had to engage in a brand-new two-hour training, including everyone sitting at this table. And so knowing that that was coming, we did two things. We've, like I said, streamlined by role, but also we put it out for access for employees. Our educators really want to focus on the classroom the second they get here in August, so we gave them access to these videos, I believe it was in late July. So I keep creeping it back as, as far as I can into the summer to give them the whole summer, but it's not easy to set up. So that's why it's up there as an accomplishment.
I mean, there's nothing like bloodborne pathogens when you're on a nice beach vacation.
They asked for it, though.
It was a request.
You're gonna wanna watch bloodborne pathogens.
So of course, you know, our office was, was very busy, as with everybody else at this table, with the Rye High School leadership transition support. You know, a quick shout out to Chrissy Cannon. She did a phenomenal job holding down the fort, so to speak, and making sure that no ball was dropped and that we opened seamlessly. And we did. I'm very pleased that, you know, the high school had a very smooth opening, and it's a large part to her efforts.
But also, you're selling yourself a little short there, Brian. You were technically the high school principal throughout the summer, and did quite a job supporting Chrissy and the searchers and all of that work. So thank you.
Thanks, Eric. So Tricia had mentioned our, that we're constantly tinkering and trying to improve our new teacher orientation. And part of that is that we're partnering very closely, Tricia and I, in our offices, to expand the new educator supports throughout the year. And we're, we're expanding those lists of supports beyond mentorship, the mentoring program that we have, to be a bit more deliberate in nurturing their growth in their first few years here. And then, of course, there is this annual calibration and alignment of our observation and evaluation process with our leadership team. And what I'm always pushing for is that this align, well, we're required annually and legally to calibrate our observation processes, right? That's, that's a requirement of New York State A P P R by law. But more important than, than that for me, is that our observation and evaluation and new teacher supports are aligned with our professional learning priorities. So all of the great work that you see that has come out of the Curriculum Instruction Office over the summer, we want to make sure that we're observing and holding folks accountable to those expectations as outlined, and as we've trained everyone to be able to do. And then, you know, we, we do have a freshly settled teacher contract, but at the same time, it's always really important to stay on top of what the trends are in the region. And so that's a big priority for us and something we began this summer.
Thanks, Brian. So what was the business office doing this summer? We initiated tax collection, as we always do, in the month of July. As everybody's leaving, the board passes the tax warrant, and we initiate tax collection over two collections. The first one in August, and then the second one comes thereafter in November. Currently, we have collected forty-six point six million of the ninety-eight point seven one million tax levy that we use to support the school district budget for the year. So we are right on track as we typically are at this time, almost half. So that's good news. Also, we embark on our external audit. I have to give a shout out to Kathy Vigiano. She leads the business office team and gets it done. The week of August twelfth, they came in, they were here. This is all in anticipation of our financial package that has to be submitted up to the state by October fifteenth. So leading up to that, the audit committee will be meeting on October first, in time for the October eighth board meeting, where our auditors will come and talk to you about the external audit findings, where we landed. And then we get everything up to the state by October fifteenth. Facilities was very busy this summer, as they have been in the last few years, as we continue to chip away at the bond initiative that started back in 2019. So the latest installment that occurred predominantly here at the high school, middle school campus, we completed the high school I lab. We did the redesign of the high school, middle school media center. We painted with new lighting for the high school performing arts center, and you'll see here it's noted as Act One, because we will be coming back next summer to do the bottom half of the performing arts center. So new carpeting, new chairs, new alignment of the chairs, so it won't feel like you're falling off a cliff as you're walking down the stairs, aisle lighting, handrails.
Accessibility.
Accessibility, yes. So there's more to come there. And we embarked on the demolition of the portables, hold your applause, at Midland and Osborne this summer as well, in anticipation of the new additions that are forthcoming. In addition, we did a lot of work out of the transfer to capital funds that was part of the approved budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, which included painting the high school gym, which is the first half, get it, first act, first half, we're playing the second half. Next summer will actually be a new floor in the gym, because we have sanded it to the point where you cannot sand anymore. So we need a new floor, which will prompt us to install new bleachers. The, the engineering of the bleachers will remain the same. It will be removed and reinstalled, but we will have new seats for the bleachers. We did an overhaul of the wrestling room. It's no longer stinky, and it's really bright in there because we painted and we have new lighting. Mats are being delivered soon, so we will be up and running for the wrestling winter season and ready to go. Ventilation and air conditioning as well. That unit is still on its way, but will be fully implemented and installed before the season starts. And the Rye High School softball field, which is right over there, we are finishing off, well, we've done the schematic design. We're working on the drainage portion of that design, making sure that we have everything quite right. We're working on pre-construction permits, and like I said, finalizing that drainage plan, which is also important, because we're next to the brook. And obviously, I don't need to tell anybody about making sure that we are managing flooding.
Do you have any sort of guesses to when it will be? Like, what's the target?
We will be ready for softball season in the spring, one hundred percent. More facilities. So we hosted summer programming at our building. So while this building was predominantly under construction, and we had to relocate our folks to Milton, so thank you, Milton, but Midland hosted the Rye Rec camp, Osborne hosted the Rye Y camp, and Milton hosted our district programming for E S Y Extended School Year, middle school, high school, and all of our displaced staff from the high school, middle school, as we were doing construction here.
And, and we also hosted the seniors, the, the Rye seniors.
That's right. We hosted our Rye seniors over at CAP, and they were playing bridge, I believe, in our conference room.
I think they had some canasta going on at some point, but definitely bridge.
Yeah.
Because they were displaced by the summer programs at.
They usually are here, so we took them in at CAP. And we had a great time.
We did, and they loved being there with us.
Yeah, they did.
And we loved having them.
We exchanged recipes. It was great. We did flooring, and as we have continued throughout the district to change all of our flooring, to reduce wax, time that our custodians are spending on wax, being more environmentally conscious about that. And we installed approximately six thousand square feet of flooring in the Milton hallways before and after the programming started. So it was this real strategic ball of just moving everything around. So I, I cannot thank my custodians enough for just their reaction and their constant thinking and just being here around the clock to make things work so that we're ready to go. Painting, so because we're not spending hours and hours like we normally would in the past waxing floors, we have ridiculously painted all over the district. We, we purchased over five hundred gallons of paint this summer. And it, it's just, it's nonstop. So it's amazing what they're able to accomplish now. At Nugent Stadium, the turf field, we repaired the storm damage that we had from last year. It was a bit challenging. There, it's, it was, we had wavy lines across the turf, if people remember. And again, a shout out to our contractors, because this is something that they've never embarked on before, and they actually manufactured, the way I could best describe it, is a claw that they literally, inch by inch, pulled the, the carpet back into place to straighten out those lines. They were out there for about three to five days, and it, it was a miracle. But they have figured out a way to address storm damage if we ever need it again. So we're very grateful to them and giving it a shot.
Yeah, and I can just, actually, I remember asking you about that, I think last spring or whatever it was, and, and had been watching, and when I was at the game on Friday, noticed, among other things, there were a lot of things that looked great, including the outcome of that game. But the lines looked really, really good.
Thank you. We painted the track, so it was, you know, just use and storm damage again. It fades, and if you go out there, it's bright and beautiful. So we're back in action with our track. And if you remember, we did talk about that when we were here back in June, in terms of building in regular cycles of maintenance for all of our athletics, and figuring out how to maintain all of that. And that's a perfect example of now we've built that in on a cycle, and working very closely with our professionals and our contractors to make sure that we're not slipping on any of those items and keeping those in good condition. The installation of the new scoreboard, that actually happened at the very end of last week, I think.
Fifth.
Yep. So that's up and running. Thank you, Rye Fund for Education, for supporting that effort, as well as we went out there and we did bulb replacement on the stadium lights, which is all fun, too, to watch them do that, which we thank our Acorn Electric, actually.
Well, the good thing, because the lights came down, that they actually went back up.
Yeah.
That's always a fear, because they need to go back up.
Yep. Network and infrastructure, and I, I, I can't say enough about the collaboration between our facilities department and our network and infrastructure. Again, shout out, Caitlin's here. Thank you so much. If it wasn't for her great relationship with Rob and figuring out how they work together and balancing all of these things going on in this building all summer long, we wouldn't be here. Because they, too, took on a Herculean effort this summer, installing miles of cabling to complete, to fully recable this building. We started last summer, but we really completed that effort this summer. We, as a part of that, we also constructed new server closets strategically located throughout the building, giving back space to the building. So, you know, combining server closets and reducing the number, but giving back space to the building, which was really smart and strategic in doing that. We installed almost two hundred and fifty Salto locks in this building, so we are one hundred, well, almost one hundred percent done. There's about thirty more to go. But all of our classrooms are complete throughout the district, so thank you very much. And that was an amazing way to start the school year, as well as installing a new P A lockdown system here at the high school. So we have really completed those two circles, and I cannot tell you how amazing that is, that it has now connected the entire district in terms of lockdown.
And we saw it this morning. So we had our first lockdown drill in the high school, middle school building. And as designed, all the other schools and the district office were locked out. So when that lockdown tripped here, once that code was punched and we went into lockdown here, it secured every other building in the district immediately. And that is just an extraordinary accomplishment to, very proud and excited of.
Before we get away from that, just, all the classrooms have the ability to create that, to send that code, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Food service. So food service. So Chef Esteban is leading the team here at the high school, and that's really exciting for us, because actually, Esteban has been in the district for a number of years, and he has worked his way up to that position. So we're super proud and super happy to have him, and he's an amazing cook. So our kids are really going to be able to benefit from his creations as he leads that team. At the elementary school, I want to just highlight some changes that have been made. This is a direct result, and we have to say thank you to all of our elementary parents. At the end of the school year, we actually put out a parent survey. It was actually a parent and please invite your child to help you complete the survey. And we had close to four hundred responses, so that was great. And as a result of the responses that we received, and some of the feedback that we received, we made some tweaks to the elementary menus. Those tweaks include, include reducing the number of offerings throughout the month of brunch for lunch, offering a specialty salad as an option with pizza Fridays, as well as reducing or limiting the number of ice cream varieties that we offer in our cafeterias. And I don't need to read them, but they're there. Those are the offers that we're making. I want to mention, because it's been in the news quite a bit, but the bores had recalls that have been out there, as we are, Stacy, our food service director, is keeping a close eye. That list tends, has been expanding as of recent, but we are keeping a close eye on any of the items that are showing up on that list. But I am happy to report that none of the items that have been recalled are any of the items that we use in our cafeteria, or have we used in the past. So we're thankful for that. In addition, we are launching our Food for Thought. It's a periodic parent newsletter that we'll be sending out, because one of the other things that we realized in receiving the responses to the survey, there are a lot of things that we're already doing in our cafeterias, and it's really just putting that information out there to either remind parents or let them know what's going on in our cafeterias, and just to keep. going on in our cafeterias, and just to keep them up to date and let them know about the exciting stuff that's happening with food.
And I know you're working with some parents that have been giving you feedback on that as well.
That is true, yes.
Okay. So, as I said at the outset, it has been a busy summer for us here in the district, and we're really proud of the work that's been accomplished. And I hope this has told a pretty good story about what we've been up to these past couple months. And we're certainly open to any questions, comments, thoughts. I know we've done some questions throughout.
Thank you. This is a really detailed presentation, and it is no surprise to parents that summer was very short. And so to think that all of this work was done within eight weeks is tremendous. And, you know, the old adage, teachers, it's a great gig because you get your summers off. It's clearly not because you get your summers off why it's such a great gig. It's something else. Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to, you know, say thank you. I think as we've seen each year, the coordination and collaboration that occurs at the central administration, administrative level, and then all the way down through the system is, it's clear that without that, none of this could get done at the speed and accuracy that it does. And it makes a huge difference for when our students come back every September to have that experience and to be fulfilling, you know, all of the work that we've put on our to-do list through both the Capitol Project and just our ongoing maintenance. So it, and professional development, and E S Y, and all of our H R work, it's just phenomenal. So thank you guys very much, and everybody who has put their time in this summer to make it all happen.
And I think it's important also to just sort of highlight a few things that, you know, we talked about six, seven years ago. The maintenance staff, hiring the maintenance folks, the maintenance staff is exactly who is installing those 250 Salto locks throughout the summer. This wasn't a contractor. If we had to put that out to bid and deal with a contractor for that, it would have been far more expensive and a lot less efficient.
And they wouldn't be done.
Correct. They'd be on a coffee break right now. But, you know, adding the board's support to add those positions years ago and go from one to two has made such a difference in the work that we're able to accomplish. The, you know, the thinking, again, four or five years ago, let's rethink, or whenever Rob started pushing us on the floors, you know, let's stop looking at floors. So we have a product that not only, you know, and this is where it's, you've heard Rob present before, and he talks about the Rye commitment when he's presenting. Not only is that floor an environmentally friendly, a time-saving thing, it's also instructionally, it has an impact because it is an acoustic-grade flooring solution, and it really does change the sound and the impact of noise in those classrooms and the corridors and in the classrooms where the flooring surface is being installed. So, you know, this, I say this a lot, and we always put it at the front of all of our presentations, we're really serious about our commitment, about the Rye commitment, and every decision that we make, from facilities to operations to instruction to professional learning to special education and P P Fs, it all goes back to that commitment that the board has made to the community, and it's our responsibility to fulfill that. And we continue that work. And it's really exciting to see that progress and where we've come.
I agree, and I want to make sure that I don't leave this out because I think the reason that maybe it isn't top of mind always is because it always works so well, and that's our technology and our infrastructure around that. And with Kaitlyn at the helm, our five-year planning that has gone along with that, I mean, this is one of those, technology is one of those things that when it's, when it works, it's amazing, and when it doesn't, it's like the end of the world. So, and the fact that we have continuously chipped away at expanding and having our systems be more robust so we can handle everything that happens within the buildings is.
And the future-proofing is Kaitlyn's, I've talked about.
Exactly.
But the other piece, and this was in our joint communication that we put out with the Rye Police earlier this week, you know, Kaitlyn had been working with the city on trying to figure out ways to improve the police radio reception throughout the community because it's not just in the schools. And installing that booster at Milton School and the police buying the boosters for all the other schools, and we're installing those in the buildings, it helps our systems internally, but it helps in keeping our facilities more secure and that collaboration with the emergency services. So, thank you, Kaitlyn.
Well, and I'd like to just go back to the projected enrollment for a minute because I think we need to really be pretty explicit because there is a national conversation about declining enrollment in public schools. And there has been a community conversation over the last at least six years that I've sat at the table and certainly well before that, related to this precipitous decline that was going to happen and this big drop-off in our enrollment. And when we look at where, so our graduating class last year was 219. We're actually enrolled 210 kindergarten kids. So this idea that there was going to be this huge drop, and then we were never going to make it up, and if you look as it goes forward, the idea that we're going to continue as our biggest class this year should graduate, we will continue to fill those seats. And so all of the work that is being done all the time in the buildings, in the classroom, getting staff, supporting our special education students, supporting our technology, that's why our enrollment is doing what it's doing. And so all of these factors are playing in together, and the better and the more, the stronger we make our systems, the stronger we make our school system, and the more attractive we make it to people to come here. And so they're all hand in hand, and we're all really wonderful beneficiaries of this great team and planning and effort and thoughtfulness about what happens in the district.
And that growth is happening without real estate growth. So unlike Harrison, where you've got apartment complexes going up everywhere, this, our housing stock is our housing stock. You may have a house that, or a property that goes to a multi-unit, but that's few and far between. To go up 91 kids one year, 63 kids above projections to next year, I think we'll be having the same conversation about enrollment this time next year.
Yeah. Well, and that's a sign of good, strong schools. So thank you all for that. And that happens because you work hard all year round, not just September to June. So thank you all very much. All right. So with that, we will move on to our hearing of the public on non-agenda items. There is no one here from the public, so I will save my opening statement for the next time when hopefully they'll be public. Ah, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Don't all jump at once. Jen Boyle, thank you, seconded by, thank you, Sean Clapham. Let's take a look at this evening's consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. I'm not going to do it with each one, I promise. Consent agenda professional. Consent agenda classified. Consent agenda pupil personnel services and special education. And consent agenda curriculum instruction and assessment. Casing, no questions. Can all those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda? That is seven, nothing. So on this evening's consent agenda, we have a generous donation from the middle school P T O in the amount of $45,000 to provide flexible furniture for our science classrooms. I know our students will be excited. We also have the approval of the I B coordinator, grade-level leaders, special education liaisons at secondary level, which just further highlights the continued commitment of our staff to ensuring that our students and our teachers have wonderful opportunities for growth and learning in the district. We also have our approval of our district professional learning plan for the year 24-25, which again is part of our commitment as a board to our teachers in the Rye commitment to provide them with opportunities for high-quality professional learning activities. One of the things that doesn't get enough credit, I think, that I think's awesome, is our agreement for the language line. And this allows our teachers and our families to be able to connect and communicate in the students' and families' primary language. And it is a huge benefit for our community and for our teachers to be able to use it. And so I'm happy to see that we, once again, are utilizing that service. So, moving on, there is nothing for presentation and discussion. Number two, for information and discussion, Mrs. Boyle, I see policies.
Yes, you do. So it's hard to believe there's already policies on the agenda, even though we haven't actually met as a policy committee yet this year, but these are from last year.
Because the policy committee's hard at work all the time.
So these are three policies and one regulation that are on here for information and discussion that are driven from an update that came at the end of last year. And they are all stemming from ed law 2D and personal identifiable information and restrictions on those that became, wanted to be more clear in these policies for people because some of them, some of them also noted other privacy thresholds that were not as stringent, like FERPA. So each of these contains information about personal identifiable information and states areas where it's, they wanted to be more explicit about it. So we can start with, let's start with student privacy, which is policy 5550. And you'll see in here the changes that were made in green and anything that was struck in red and deleted. So most of these updates you'll see are specific to wanting to make sure we're adhering to the law. There's a few minor updates, adding the name, the word guardian next to parent. So there are some smaller things. But there were clarifications in language that we wanted to make sure matched across all of these. So take some time to look through them. The biggest thing, I think, in this particular policy is the elimination of a whole lot of areas that were allowed. We originally did say that we could release certain information about students, and that's a section toward the end of the first page into the second page where it listed things from college or other post-secondary education recruitment through student recognition programs and things like that. So this is one particular area that is of note. We do still allow information to be released regarding post-secondary education, college, or military recruitment, but that has now been captured in student records because that is one of the only areas where that remains. All of these others have been removed. So that was one of the larger changes to this particular policy. So if there's anything that's jumping out at anyone that wants to ask a question now, or we will have a second reading at our next meeting also. So then if we do go to student records, you'll see similar types of changes here related to ed law 2D, part 121. I would say the biggest addition to this policy are all of the definitions. And these have been, we decided to include all of these because they actually refer to some of these terms throughout the other, throughout student privacy and student, school records, which is the next, school district records, which is 1120. So we felt it was important to capture these here so that it was clear what each term meant, in case someone needed to refer back to it. And these are all cross-referenced with each other throughout. I think the rest of these are fairly straightforward. And then the other policy of 1120, which is school district records, this was, this was a very straightforward update. The interesting part is that we are actually including a regulation to be adopted, which is the regulation that goes with school district records. And the reason that we are doing that is because as part of this particular policy, it's the law states that we need to have these regulations, but we also need to adopt them, which is unusual. Typically, we do not adopt regulations. We typically only adopt policies as a board, but this was an area where it was part of the actual law that indicated we needed to also adopt the regulations. But again, those, these changes are fairly straightforward. And there is another update to FOIL requests in here as well. So if there are no immediate questions or comments?
Okay.
No?
Yep.
Please do take a look through. If there is anything that strikes anyone, make sure to bring it up for our second reading. After that reading, we will then bring it forward to be adopted in October.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Communications to and from the board, board and district committee updates. I know you all were so excited when you received your committee assignments, and I thank you all for raising your hands and accepting whatever you got assigned to you, even if it didn't match what you may or may not have submitted on your form. So thank you for that. And as such, we will have our first policy meeting, it looks like tomorrow. And then the audit committee meeting, as Ms. Peruccio said, will meet on October 1st. So we look forward to all committee reports being robust and filled with lots of great information to share with the community and the board and whoever else would like to find out. It's going to be a great year, everybody. Okay, so our next meeting.
Do we want to just, I know that there are going to be some committees that we've been looking for community members. Do we want to mention that?
Oh, I wasn't going to, but sure. As soon as I pull up that email. That's right. Anyone? Anyone here? Let's see. Here we go.
No, but as every year, there's a call for community members to join our committees so that they can give perspective and input and.
And we will go through because we don't know if these yet need community members.
Right, but there will definitely always be some.
Please keep an eye out where there may be an opportunity. You could find those in, I'm sure, the P O newsletters, on our websites, in many different ways of which we communicate with our fam, probably even on our Twitter. Maybe it'll get tweeted, maybe it'll be on the Insta. So many opportunities. Who knows what the year will hold, everybody? As I said, endless opportunities. All right. Our next meeting is going to be on September 24th, at which time we will discuss our 24-25 Board of Education goals.
We'll also be coming to the board with a presentation on the tax, a full tax collection update and some detailed information about the, this year's tax assessment and the construction of that and how it developed throughout the budgeting process and where, and some history on that. So that'll be a second presentation for the 24th.
Excellent. And we look forward to all of those. So, seeing no other need for business, can I have motion to adjourn the meeting? Callie Erickson, seconded by Tom Stein, all those in favor. That's seven, nothing. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.